...conducting this business and not to be considered in the community. There is time for public participation during the meeting as we plan on the general planning process. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Here.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
I think I've approved a Treasury report dated February 29th, 2020.
Okay. Josh, get it.
All right. The first page I wanted to review is the blue section. I believe it's the one, it might be the last one, should you go to the end of the blue section. First section, and it's not the last one. It's the one or year of the meeting that shows what percentage of that line item we are currently sitting at. You can see that we have 67% of the year has lapsed. But things I wanted to point out especially that are important, we have received their top 68% of our budget and state foundation revenue.
Josh, were you able to blow that up any earlier?
So there on the second row, you can see the state foundation revenue. We currently have received 68% of what we budgeted to receive for this year with 67% of the year lapsed. So we're 1% ahead of what we get in revenue, you want to be ahead in revenue. Some of those other figures are a little skewed because real estate tax comes in two times a year, so that's not spread out by the foundation and some of the others. Under expenditures, salaries and retirement benefits were 65 and 64% with 67% of the year lapsed. That's good because you want expenditures to be below that figure slightly. So that'll catch up, by the way, when we have a three paid month that's coming up soon. Other than that, we'll have another report. I can't remember exactly what I gave you. Okay. This one, in contrast to the other one, shows what percentage of the total amount of revenue, not just the amount budgeted on the one row, but the total is made up there. So you can see that state foundation is only 19% of our budget. And then we get some more state funding for other little pieces, items, grants, but we always, we've been saying 27% is what we expect at the end of the year for state funding for a district. Under expenditures, we see that salaries and wages have added up, 56 to 23, at 79% of our budget, salaries and wages, and that's, that's a pretty good amount too. Many districts are in the 80s on that one. Got numerous financial reports included with the agenda. Anyone have any questions on any of those? Okay, Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
I think I've approved an advance, which is a loan of $1,753.20 from the General Fund to the Network Connectivity Grant, state grant. I'm gonna wait and see, we have a motion section?
Mrs. France?
Okay, yes. So we get a state grant for IT network connectivity to pay that, for two of that, and the bill comes in at the beginning of the year, has to be paid, and the grant money doesn't fully come in until the end of the year. So we're not allowed to have a grant fund in the red, we have to loan the money to our general fund, then when the grant comes in, we pay, we pay back the general funds. A bookkeeping thing.
Any questions?
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
I think I've approved the transfer of $15 from the Developmental High School and Principal 's Activity Fund to, to the class of 19 to zero that out.
Mrs. Long?
Mrs. Slough?
That was just the class of 19 wound up $15 that was spent. That's a great.
Any questions?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
I think I've approved the transfer of $15 from the Developmental High School and Principal's Activity Fund to, to the class of 19 to zero that out.
Mrs. Long?
Mrs. Slough?
That was just the class of 19 wound up $15 that was spent. That's a great.
Any questions?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
I think I've approved an appropriations amendment in the amount of $91,891.98 as included with the agenda in the blue section for increases in federal funds allotments that we received in mid-year.
Second.
Mrs., the majority of that amount is student wellness money we received, it's 87,000 plus. So, and we had some other minor federal grants increased slightly in the middle of the years, we have to increase our appropriations to meet those grant funds.
Any questions?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
Okay, do I get a motion to approve the tax rates as set by the Green County Budget Commission for Bond Retirement at 4.72 mils? And I will explain that if that's the motion.
Second.
If we began in, we did it in 2004 with a bond issued, developing a middle school and renovating other buildings, and it was 6.9 mils, that has been reduced over the years down to what it is now in 4.72 mils. A mileage is reduced because our property values go up, or because over the years we're paying down the principal. So we have less money, we don't need as much principal and interest to pay that bond debt instead of mileage to reduce. The auditor, the prosecuting attorney, and the Green County Treasurer, makeup budget commission, they set it at 4.72 mils, so we have to approve that.
Any questions? Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And the last one, we need a motion to approve myself treasurer as the appointed member to represent Belvoir Sugar Creek Board of Education on the new and formed Green County Tax and Criminal Review Council.
So you have, Mrs. France?
This is, as I said, the new council is formed to discuss tax and criminal financing issues in the county with all of the entities that have those in their communities. Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And the last one.
We need a motion to approve myself treasurer as the appointed member to represent Belvoir Sugar Creek Board of Education on the new and formed Green County Tax and Criminal Review Council.
So you have, Mrs. France?
This is, as I said, the new council is formed to discuss tax and criminal financing issues in the county with all of the entities that have those in their communities. Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Slough?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
I think I've approved a motion.
So what, I was getting correspondence and public comments, so, sorry about that. Do you have any correspondence for this question? All right. That's about the good news for the commission. Cameron Bybee here. Oh, he's not. Well, Cameron is an OHSAA 2020 Division Two State Qualifier, 15th place in that 200-yard freestyle. So that is quite an accomplishment. And we have an awesome swimming team. Last year, I think we were beating out about a dozen of these, it seemed like a lot. But, so congratulations to Cameron, and we'll see that he gets us. All right, it's time for our points of board. First off, we have Jennifer St. Pierre for the Middle School High School Science Fair Review.
Okay.
Please do. Thank you so much.
Thank you for inviting me to speak about our science fair program here at Belvoir Sugar Creek Schools. We've had great success with our science fair program. This has been our 24th year for the science fair. We have a science fair here at Bell Creek Intermedia. We also have one at Belvoir Middle School that has the combined middle school and high school students each year, so it's a six through 12 science fair. And this year, there were 19 participants at BCI Science Fair. And at the one hosted at Belvoir Middle School, we had 47 participants. That was again a combination of middle school and high school students. We had 70% of the ones at the middle school earn a superior rating, which is the highest you can earn, and that means they qualified for the West District Science Fair. So out of those, we have 20 that are participating in the West District Science Fair, so that's really exciting. And then every year, we do have participants in the district science fair, the state science fair. They earn really awesome awards. We're of course really proud of all our student participants, and this is an optional after school program for them, so it's nothing that's required of them. And then I was just going to highlight a couple of science fair successes. So over the years, we had four students from the high school that made it to the International Science and Engineering Fair. And then one of those students, she had a couple really great awards, so I want to make sure to recognize her. So she's a recent Belvoir graduate, and she started science here in the middle school and continued into the high school, and she participated in the Buckeye Science and Engineering Fair for several years. And her work was submitted to NASA, and she was a keynote speaker at the Miami Valley Astronomical Society meeting. So really, we're just super proud. We've had some amazing accomplishments from our students, and they bring a lot of great honor and recognition to our schools. And our fair is also involved family, community each year, and we think it's just really good opportunity. So we just wanted to share a little bit about our science fair and our student successes. So thank you.
Jennifer Holter and Michelle Flory are not going to be able to be here this evening, though we do have Sasha Taylor to give a presentation on Health Moves Mind.
Good evening. To the board, Dr. Cozad and community members, my name is Sasha Taylor, and I'm the physical education teacher here at BCI. I am honored to be asked to highlight our Health Moves Minds program at BCI. I would like to acknowledge, though, that there are many phenomenal programs going on in the building from numerous staff, so please keep in mind that this is just one of the many programs happening here. Last year, BCI piloted the new Health Moves Minds Service Learning Program that was created by Shape America. This is our National Professional Association for Physical Education and Health Teachers, and we were one of 20 schools nationwide that participated in the pilot program. This program was invented to replace the Jumper Heart Program that had ended. The new program is centered around social emotional learning. It is centered based for both health and physical education, and is K through 12. It includes the principles of mindfulness, kindness, and empowerment. It also, excuse me, it allows teachers to choose their theme, physical activity events, and a local charity of their choice for a fundraising option. We chose an obstacle course event and paired it with our spring book fair for our family night, and we chose the Miami Valley Down Syndrome Association as our local charity. We had kids come up with slogans that could merge the book fair's jungle theme with the kindness theme from Health Moves Minds. And the winner was kindness is like a jungle, explore it. We decorated our building to match the theme, and many teachers came up with additional themes as well. This was a collaborative event, and we would like to thank the groups who helped. They include the Wright State University Physical Education Student Teachers, VHS ROTC students, VHS health students, as well as many BCI staff members, so that our BCI parents could come to the family night and experience it with their children, with limited parent volunteers needed. Lastly, I would like to thank BSEF for many of pieces of the equipment that you will be seeing in our highlight video. They were purchased through a grant last year, and some pieces were also borrowed from other schools in our district too. The children at the beginning of our video are holding signs that will not show up on the screen, unfortunately. I will be reading their chosen phrase that will complete this sentence. I matter because I am in the blank. So I'll orally read that, the part that you cannot see. So here is our highlight video for you to see. I am an artist. I play the piano. I work hard. I have friends. I play sports. I am kind. I'm good at coding. I like swimming. I show cows. I make everyone laugh. I show kindness. I am respectful. I am smart. I have five brothers. I have brown belt in karate. I take care of dogs. And I speak my mind.
Thank you very much. That was great to watch, and I hope you'll invite me up the next time you do that. My chin looks. And, very much, District Finances, Dr. Cozad and Mr. White.
And just want to comment to Jennifer St. Pierre, thank you very much. You always do a fantastic job with the science fair. Really gives our kids a great experience, what a real life learning experience. I'm always happy to, to also judge that, but what a great real life learning experience. You guys talk to adults, explain, justify, you know, the whole project, so it's great. Really appreciate that. And Sasha, you always do a fantastic job with Health Moves Minds. Yes, I said it correctly. Cheated over there. But do a fantastic, fantastic job with that, and always do unique stuff to make, you know, activity really fun, and it's always different, find a unique way, so appreciate that. And our kindness event was, was a fantastic event for the whole BCI staff and students. And also Miami Valley Down Syndrome Association benefiting from that also, so thanks to both of you. Positive stuff.
All right, on to reviewing District Finances. We've done this several times, I know a lot of you've heard it before, so this is the much condensed version. We will have to live through the long version this time, but we do want to make sure that everyone gets to work. So information about the levy that we have a vote on Tuesday, is a 5.7 mil continuous operating levy. We haven't had a levy passed since 2000.
So that our BCI parents could come to the family night and experience it with their children, with limited parent volunteers needed. Lastly, I would like to thank VSEF for many of pieces of the equipment that you will be seeing in our highlight video. They were purchased through a grant last year and some pieces were also borrowed from other schools in our district, too. The children at the beginning of our video are holding signs that will not show up on the screen, unfortunately. I will be reading their chosen phrase that will complete this sentence. "I matter because I..." and then the blank. So I'll orally read that, the part that you cannot see. So here is our highlight video for you to see. I am an artist. I play the piano. I work hard. I have friends. I play sports. I'm kind. I'm good at coding. I like swimming. I show cows. I make everyone laugh. I show kindness. I am respectful. I am smart. I have five brothers. I have a brown belt in karate. I take care of dogs. And I speak my mind.
Thank you very much. That was great to watch, and I hope you'll invite me up the next time you do that. My chin looks... And, um, very much, District Finances, Dr. Liz and Mr. Martin.
And just want to comment to Jennifer St. Pierre. Thank you very much. You always do a fantastic job with the Science Fair. Really gives our kids a great experience, what a real-life learning experience. I'm always happy to also judge that, but what a great, real-life learning experience. Here's a talk to adults, explain, justify, you know, the whole project, so it's great. Really appreciate that. And Sasha, you always do a fantastic job with Help Moves Minds. Yes, I said correctly. Cheated over there. But do a fantastic job with that. You always do unique stuff to make, you know, activity really fun. And it's always different, find a unique way, so appreciate that. And our kindness event was a fantastic event for the whole BCI staff and students. And also, My Valley Down Syndrome Association benefiting from that also. So thanks to both of you. Positive stuff.
All right, on to reviewing District Finances. We've done this several times, I know a lot of you've heard it before, so this is the much convoluted version. We will have to live through the long version this time. But we do want to make sure that everyone gets word. So, information about the levy that we have a vote on Tuesday. It's a 5.7 mil continuous operating levy. We haven't had a levy pass since 2015 in this district. It is for day-to-day operations. We aren't building a building or doing something like that with the money. It's just to operate the school district. One of the two major culprits in the reason why we need this is that we only get 27% of our funding from the state. School districts only have three major ways to get money. Income tax levy, which we don't have. State funding, which is very low compared to other districts because of our income level and our property values in this district. The state lowers our funding plus of that. And then the other way to get money is a property tax levy, which we are attempting on Tuesday. We have, at this point, made $2.3 million in cutbacks and reductions. And the cost of this levy to an owner of a $100,000 household would be $16.60 a day, or, I mean, a month, not a day. It's a big difference. And, or, if you want to look at it per year, it's just under $200. $1.9950 is what is estimated there. Some other facts about the levy. It would raise $3.3 million per year for the school district. If it's passed, you would not see it on your tax bill until January 2021. Another of the reasons why we need this is that in the 2018-19 school year, we totaled $3.6 million in unfunded or underfunded mandates. So the items that the state and federal government require us to do, that they either don't fund at all, or that they fund partially. And many of them are great, they're all great programs, really, but very costly. So we've gone through those before. College Credit Plus, one of them, charge school cycle a lot of money. Obviously, any district, special education is expensive. There are numerous others. Those are some of the major ones. We've been asked a lot, what about the additional construction in the area? Cornerstone property reappraisals? This amounts to about 2% of our budget. So we do get money from that. Those items, we're glad to get it, but it's not, it doesn't solve the problem for us.
Again, we've gone through these before, but again, I think it's important to go through them because it really sets the picture, really sets the stage of why we're at, where we're at. And also, you know, as we talk about Phase 3 and 4 reductions later in this presentation here, you know, there's other rounds of reductions we've already done. So trying to add all those together really is a big picture of a lot of reductions. So background information, so summer 2018, we had about $500,000 in budget reductions. May of 2019, we had a 7.5 mil replacement levy on the ballot, and it did not pass. That really prompted us to do our Phase 1 reductions in June of 2019. That was about $813,000. We continued to look for other ways to reduce our expenditures. So that summer, we also decreased our, had additional reductions of about $168,000. During the summer, we also worked collaboratively with the State Auditor's Office, and that information came out in January. We'll go over some of that in just a second. We did not put a levy on the ballot in 2019, because really, we wanted to continue to get information out to our community, but also, you know, part of that survey that we conducted in the summer was the community said, if you're going to come back for a levy, you need to make some additional reductions. So we've been making those reductions. And November 2019, Phase 2 reductions, it's a million dollars. So about 750 of that is a 0% pay freeze for all staff. So that's a huge, critical piece to this whole puzzle, is the staff, for lack of better word, took one for the team and took a 0% pay freeze for the next year. So if you add all those up together, total budget reductions to date, over $2.3 million. Up through our Phase 2 reductions, we'll talk about Phase 3 and 4 here in a second. So just in these Phase 2 reductions in that summer 2018, I'm sorry, about 20 staff positions eliminated, about 10 certified staff members. So we're going to the next slide here. Kevin, you want to talk about that one? What prompted the performance audit here?
I try to say this as much as possible, but when we have a performance audit, this is much different than a regular state audit. It's an audit where they come in and look at all of our procedures, transportation, staffing, everything we do here, and try to come up with some ways we can do it more efficiently and save money. On one hand, you always hope that they're going to find some big items we can save money on. In one respect, that means we weren't operating efficiently to start out with, so I hope that doesn't happen. And you hope maybe that they don't find much, and that doesn't help you if they don't find much. And they kind of fell there on that last one, where they didn't find much, but they had to really come up with some doozies there at the end to make up for what they needed to get us to the point that they need to in those audits. So, let's get back to you. Give me the bottom. All right, we see back here the five-year forecast, where June 30th, 2022, we are forecasted in the general fund to end in a deficit, $1.893 million in red. When the State, the High Department of Education sees that you have forecasts in the red two years out, they put you in either a caution status, state caution for fiscal school districts. They called ours a precaution. I didn't know there was such a designation, but I think they're just saying, you're about to go into the caution status, the first of three. Each one, as you get further into them, involves more state control over the expenditures from your school district, less local control. So we are required, they're requiring us by March 31st, so just a couple weeks away, to have a report to the state of how we will be in the black at the end of 2022. So we have to come up with approximately $1.9 million or more. We'd like to be over that, not just right at zero. Without a levy, you're not allowed to talk about passage of levies, and then you just talk about if it never passes. What are you going to do with the cutbacks to get to that point?
So if we move on to the performance audit, again, we're not going to go through the whole performance audit again, because we've gone through that numerous times. But just to highlight some things here, what did they find? So they found that the district was taking proactive measures to address the forecasted deficit. That's what I just reviewed a couple slides ago, those $2.3 million of reduction. We saw what was going on with our budget, and we took some proactive measures of trying to address the situation. The audit also identified 11 recommendations that could lead to a cost savings. So that totaled about $1.1 million. Those 11 recommendations totaled about $1.1 million. And of the $1.1 million, there were $700,000 recommendation was to eliminate the subsidy of all the extracurriculars in sports. So they said they normally don't do that, but since they couldn't find substantial savings other places, that's what they recommended in there. And we fully did that of $700,000 of not subsidizing extracurriculars. That would probably equate to $1,000, $1,200 paid a play per student, per athlete. And so that would be a huge lift for our parents. And then the other part of that $1.1 million is about five positions within the school district. So again, that didn't fully address about the $2.5 or $3 million that they needed to save or look for savings in a year to get to that $11.6 million deficit identified for our five-year forecast. So essentially, they did Recommendation 12, and as they say, it could drastically change the service levels within the district. Again, that's eliminating 16 teachers or a 10.5% reduction, or doing a pay freeze for additional three years, but that would only address half of that deficit. So you still have to do eight positions eliminated or a 5% budget reduction. So essentially, that 12% is called an escalation clause or escalation measure because they really couldn't find savings in the other areas. So other areas that examined, there were no recommendations warranted. One of those was salaries. They took a look at salaries with the local peer districts. Again, that's who we compete with for our staffing levels, our staffing. And they saw that we were below all of our local peers except one particular column, that's a bachelor 150. And I have a feeling that we're going to be lower in that area next year compared to others because of the pay freeze. So all those areas are going to be even lower for next year. On the next slide here. So what Kevin was alluding to, the financial status update, fiscal precaution. So that plan needs to be submitted by March 31st, 2020. And that's really, that 1.8, almost 1.9 million dollar figure is really what drove our Phase 3 and Phase 4 reductions. So go on to the next slide. Go on to the next slide. Go on to the next slide. All right, so these are Phase 3 reductions regardless of levy passage. So again, as we looked at our five-year forecast, even if the levy passage, we're at about zero at the end of our five-year forecast. So we need to make some additional reductions, and that's what Phase 3 is about. So that is eliminating STEP, which is the gifted pull-up program here at BCI. There's still gifted services being offered at all of our schools, but it's the pull-up program here. Oral language offerings at the middle school, and one high school English position will be reduced. Raise sports participation fees from $150 to $200. Again, that's going to close that gap in our area for the extracurriculars there, that recommendation they had, the audit did. And also, $50 a merch event, color guard, winter guard, IP, these will go to the district budget, again, to address that. And then increase all day, everyday kindergarten tuition by $900 a year. On the next slide, some additional reductions regardless of levy passage. We're going to fill a couple open positions by involuntary transfers, so we're going to fill those through attrition. Also, this summer, we're not going to have any log resurfacing or landscape mulch. Usually, every year, we put that black seal, the seal code, over a certain section every year, so we're going to skip a year of that. And no landscape mulch this summer, and we're also going to delay the purchase of Chromebooks for one year. And so that brings us to the reductions. Next year, we've got $287,000 of those, and then 2122, up $160,000. So about $750,000 for reductions based in the next two years over Phase 3 reductions. So those are happening regardless of levy passage. So Phase 4 budget reductions if the March levy does not pass. So at the high school, we wrote these down by each school, so folks could clearly see the information. Again, feedback from the last levy was, we weren't clear enough with what were the ramifications that were going to happen if the levy did not pass. So we're trying to be crystal clear here to the community of what's going to happen if the levy does not pass. So eliminating one teacher in the sole studies department, again, reducing electives and having larger class sizes. Contracting with the Career Center for BioMed Program. Reducing our library position to .5. Eliminating high school busing. Raising high school participation fees from $200 to $300, that's for high school. And eliminating 49 paid supplementals in our athletic positions. So if you go on to the next slide, those are our non-athletic positions. And as you see on here, Eagle Excellence, Key Club Advisor, ROTC Color Guard is on there, our chairpersons, STEM. So those are the supplementals at the high school. And so if you go to the next slide, are the paid supplementals that are athletics-related? You go anywhere from weight training advisor all the way down to one of the reserve wrestling coaches. So you can see those. Again, all this information is on our website, so you can see all this information on there also. On to the next slide, Bell Brook Middle School reductions. No middle school keyboarding class, no sixth grade art, again, reducing library to .5. We're going to reduce transportation to the minimum two-mile requirement at the middle school, and eliminating 25 paid supplementals for athletics. And go on to the next one. Again, I apologize for going fast. I think most of us have already seen a lot of these already. Paid supplementals, football and track, and then all the way from Camp Kern advisors to musical, to power pen, to National Honor Society in the middle school. Then we go on to Bell Creek. No art classes, no STEM classes, again, reduce transportation to the minimum two-mile state requirement. Library reduced to .5. And you see those six paid supplementals eliminated there. On to Stephen Bell. Fairly similar to BCI, no art or STEM classes, reducing library to .5. Five paid supplementals are eliminated. So district-level reductions. We're going to reduce our staff development. Also, delay curriculum adoptions in math and science. We're going to non-renew select electronic subscriptions, and also non-renew our contract with our communications consultant, Alert and Hill. So if you put all those together, reductions enforced, you have three certified teachers, four classified staff, involuntary transfers, four certified staff members, and two classified support staff. So another total slide there, the next one. 13 staffing reductions, 85 paid supplementals. And so those reductions will amount to about $1.1, almost $1.2 million in 2021, and 2122, almost $1.3 million. So it gives us a total overall reductions of about $2.4 million over the next couple years. And so the figure we were trying to hit was the $1.8, $1.9 million. So this will leave us about $500,000 in reserve. And the best practice is to have about 10% of your budget in reserves, which is about $3 million for us. So now that's pretty tight of only having $500,000 in reserves at the end of a fiscal year. So, again, on the next slide here, so, again, like I mentioned, this information is all on the website. I would strongly suggest that you find out accurate, correct information. And where can you find all the accurate and correct information? Our website is where you can find the accurate and correct information, not other places. So all the factual information is on our website. We have posted all of our presentations from this, from our last two levy community meetings, from our last board meetings. There's videos on there. Everything on there is all the factual information. So please go there to find that information out. Again, we have given numerous opportunities, like I said, through the levy community meetings, through, often with the superintendent, through board meetings, to provide information, and also through this levy community informational meetings, a lot of Q and A, and getting that information and all your questions answered. So we'll go on to the last slide. Again, like I said, Mr. Weining or myself, if you have additional questions. Also, tomorrow, we have a call through the superintendent, March, it's March 13th, at 7:15 and 9:15, and that's at Weimann's. Again, just want to reiterate that, as Governor Dewine said today, is that the election is going on. It will happen on Tuesday, but if you can do early voting, that is also suggested. But, you know, this is a critical time in our community, that the community will decide, you know, the ramifications of a levy budget. So we all need to gather all the information and make the decision on next Tuesday. I believe that's all ahead.
Thank you very much. All right, and now we're moving into open communication period. Time limit is three minutes per person. Remember, there's no campaigning, no vulgar use of talk, and no direct conversation toward any individual. So first up, we have Len Rack with Phase 4.
Thank you. I was looking at the Phase 4, you know, I came here too, and I was looking at the plan. I see staff reductions, and I see program reductions, but I don't see anything in the plan, although, I'll have to put that touch on a little bit here about some reasons in the page, but I don't see anything in the plan about how you're going to handle salaries in the future. So maybe at some point you could address that. And this is a permanent levy, and I don't know, sometimes some people will question that. Last time I was here, David, or at the other location, David Gray gave a presentation, and I asked a question about how... and I asked him a question about how, how the forecast revenue is linked into how you forecast the revenues for, for the, for the school budget. And I don't know that that ever was clarified, because I don't, I don't see that how this ties in, how the property tax revenues tie into the school budget for the future. He says he can't really forecast the past few years, but you have, but I guess Tommy has data that you can estimate tax revenues in the outlook. So, I, I don't know the answer. I'm just wondering if, if, if that's considered into your future budget. Really, the only other, the only thing I would ask for maybe a future agenda item is, I would really like to know what Alton Hill does in terms of consultation with school board. I mean, I went to the website, they give a nice sales pitch, but I really don't understand what you're doing with the school board. So, I'd like to perhaps hear that.
There's Josh.
For everyone, my name's Joshua Tresno. I've been running software development businesses since I was 18 years old. Now, for those of you who aren't aware, software development, especially bespoke software development, is a service-based business, kind of like the schools. I've seen and overseen military defense programs on several orders of magnitude larger than the school's budget. What I've learned over the years is that any large operation, I can find decisions I don't agree with. That's not mismanagement, that's growth. As a CTO now, I can't make every decision. I have to have support guys, I have to have people in a team that I build, that I choose specifically to do jobs for me. I have to trust them to make decisions that I can follow through with. I have to delegate. Before we came into this position, I didn't know any single one of the people sitting at this desk. Over the course of the last several months, I can call most of them my friends, and I've asked them some pretty difficult questions about how they run this school, about the decisions that went into the, the way that we are doing the budget, and what the state forces them to do in order to keep the school operating. They care about our kids. They will do their honest best to shape the future with all of the tools that we give them. Now, I'm sure I've made some decisions that my wife doesn't agree with, but at the end of the day, we're still married. These people, we chose. And at the end of the day, I trust them, and I trust them with our children, and I trust them with this community's education. I see no reason to take back that trust, and I don't think you should either.
And now, Diana. Quickly, this is an important counterpoint.
Nothing here about students, all about money for teachers, mutually exclusive issue. Chris Pritchard. This money is not for the children, it's for their greed, running through it. You want to do a slogan, it's for them, not the kids. Paula Kaufman. Needing teachers who want to teach the children and not worry about their paycheck and benefits. Marlene Mohler. This levy isn't about the children, this is about supporting and keeping the high salaries and Catholic benefits for teachers and administrators. John Sattler. Have enough? Yes, me too. I have enough of these derogatory opinions by September, and yet they keep coming, pouring out of local mouths and public forums for the rest of the world to see their deepest disdain regarding education, and therefore those who educate. Why should I care, though? I'm not a teacher, you're not insulting me or disparaging my profession, so why does it matter to me? The short answer is that I don't lack empathy. Teachers are humans who work their butts off, first by earning themselves a mountain of debt, and then by doing a difficult job to try and prepare our country's children for their future, as hopefully functional adults. Telling them they're greedy for wanting to pay their bills, and that they're selfish for wanting to be treated like professionals they worked hard to become is wrong, as is the concept barrage of voices telling them their profession has no value to begin with. Education only lacks value if you want movie idiocy to become reality. The longer answer is that while I'm not a teacher, my mother was, and she can no longer speak for herself. She stopped breathing on Christmas Day in 2017, past New Year's Eve. In the days between her coma and her death, I spent a lot of time thinking about her life and her relationship. I remember presenting her as a kid because I presented her job. She was always grading papers, always making lesson plans, and felt like I came second after the mountain of homework, communications with parents, plans for the next day, and other people's children to care for. It's gone long, though, sitting there in that hospital room, that those old resentments were gone. I understood how much she sacrificed for all the children of her life. All that grating meant she could keep a roof over her head, all those lesson plans kept food on the table and second-hand clothes on her backs. Talking to those parents helped ensure that the student was getting everything they needed to be successful. My mother took on the mantle of teaching because of her love for her family, as well as her love for the children she got to help blossom and grow. That same love kept her working through every hardship teaching presented until her body gave out and she was forced to retire. What this boils down to is the fact that I'm proud of what my mother dedicated her life to, and am very familiar with the compassion and self-sacrifice required to be an educator. People have, who have what it takes to become a teacher and stick with it despite the challenges, despite these littering attitudes I pointed out earlier, are true heroes and deserve our respect and our support. On the other hand, the same cannot be said about those who demonize such caring and wonderful individuals. Thank you.
This is difficult. You said you weren't going to allow it, and you allowed it again, because it's your back chair.
They were.
Now, she said specifically, again, that you said they weren't going to allow it. This was nothing but a political speech. This is why the levies made a fair up again on two fairs.
Thank you very much.
The oath, please.
Thanks, everybody. We'll launch in the superintendent's report now.
New business, certified license employment resignation leave of absence supplemental duty. Recommend acceptance of resignation for the purpose of full Ohio SDRS retirement from school nurse Jennifer Katzenberger and teacher Susan Peters effective May 31st, 2020. Very long careers in our school district, very well-respected, and just very good educator, excellent educator, and school nurse, so they're definitely going to be missed as they move on to their retirement.
One of those ladies were very influential for both of my children, so that's, I'm very happy for them, sorry for us that they're on their way.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloppman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Recommend acceptance of supplemental duty resignation from John Mosher as high school assistant production advisor for the 2019-20 school year effective immediately.
Mrs. Sloppman? Mrs. Long? Questions?
Mrs. Sloppman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Number five here, we also have a hand carry, so it's a combination of what is on the rail and then a hand, then number five, hand carry. So, recommend an approval of the following supplemental duty volunteers for the 2019-20 school year. Trevor Narker for high school assistant boys track, and then also Nathan McLoney for high school assistant football.
Mrs. France? Mrs. Sloppman? Questions?
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
So, staying on the hand carry there, recommend approval of the following substitute teacher for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, Nathan McLoney.
Mrs. France? Mrs. Sloppman? Questions?
Yes.
So, we're going to stay on the hand carry here, B, support staff employment resignation leave of absence. So, recommend acceptance of resignation from building custody William Beatty from effective June 8th, 2020.
Mrs. Long? Mrs. Sloppman? Questions?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloppman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Number two there, B, recommend approval of the following support staff substitutes for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, Nathan McLoney.
Mrs. France? Mrs. Sloppman? Questions?
Yes. Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
So, staying on the hand carry there, recommend approval of the following substitute teacher for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, Nathan McLoney.
Mrs. France? Mrs. Sloppman? Questions? Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloppman?
Yes.
So, we're going to stay on the hand carry here, C, support staff employment resignation leave of absence. So, recommend acceptance of resignation from building custody William Beatty from effective June 8th, 2020.
Mrs. Long? Mrs. Sloppman? Questions?
Yes. Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloppman?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Number two there, B, recommend approval of the following support staff substitutes for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, Chris Furtler and Amber Stewart as school van drivers.
Mrs. Sloppman? Second. Mrs. France? Questions?
Yes. Mrs. Sloppman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
So, we're going to go back to the, what was in your board package, so B is now going to be the new C. ESC Service Agreement for 2020-21. Recommend approval of the Service Agreement with Green County Educational Service Center for supplemental services during the 2020-21 school year at 1.6 million dollars, that's no increase over the 2019-20 school year.
Questions? Mrs. France? Mrs. Long?
And so, a lot of this is for special ed services, also therapy, PT, OT, speech, and preschool.
And no increase over last year?
No increase over last year, correct.
Any questions? Questions?
Yes. 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 Yes.
D, summer athletic camps, recommend approval of the following 2020 summer athletic camps. Cross-country youth camp, Eagle in middle school football camp, boys and girls youth soccer camp, and boys basketball youth camp.
Mrs. Long? Mrs. Sloppman? Questions?
Yes. 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 Questions?
So, A, B, out-of-state travel, recommend approval of the following out-of-state travel VHS girls basketball summer team camp, June 17th through the 23rd at University of North Carolina. No calls to the district.
Someone? Mrs. France? Second. Mrs. Long? Any questions? On this certain like, considering that, we need to be.
Yes, so, well, we're going to do that by on individual situation basis. So, who knows what we're going to be like in June, because we're very different than what we were about six hours ago. So, it's hour by hour. So, we're going to prove it now, we can always pull back.
Any questions? Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Half donations, recommend a seven to the following donations with gratitude, Christopher Judge, Shurg Creek Educational Concepts, a life science chess set to Bell Creek. Okay. Oh, okay. Kind of outside set, bigger set, okay. So, it's about two or three, three, four feet per piece or whatever, something in that range. Anybody paying for afterwards? Not play match, no.
All right, all right.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloppman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Questions?
Items information. If you want to do those, you want to do that, okay. So, senior, we have senior awards Wednesday, May 13th, at 8:30 a.m. in the VHS auditorium. Graduation for the class of 2020 is Saturday, May 16th, at 5:00 p.m. at Trent Arena. We also have the Green County Career Center ribbon cutting the new facility. I visited that probably a couple of months ago. It was, the roof was on, but the walls weren't all finished. It's going to be very impressive, so it's a great addition to our, to our county. So, that's September 12th, add news, put that on your calendars. And also, like I alluded to earlier, I mentioned earlier, Election Day is still going on on March 17th, and as I said, the governor mentioned, early voting, have that an option and actually prefer to do that. So, any way to vote, either early voting or Election Day? That's it.
One other thing to share, that is, board members recently completed a series of meet and greet events for the teachers and staff and administration at each of our six buildings, the four classroom buildings, the third one at the preschool, the sixth one at our transportation building. Mrs. Long organized these events for us, and we appreciate that very much. But they also had no more than two board members at each event, so it wasn't ever any official meetings, but it was, it was a nice time to get a chance to chat the staff here, any of their comments, our concerns, and get to know all of them a little bit better. So, that was, that was a great thing. Thank you very much, Mrs. Long.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. It was a smart, it was a big game. All right, do I have a motion for going into executive session for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of a licensed public employee for Vice Code 121.22, paragraph G1, and no action will be taken. Mrs. Long? Mrs. France? Questions? Comments? Please call long.
Yes. Yes.
Question passes, we'll go into executive session at 8:10. Thank you all very much.